I'd like to call the community, the whole, meeting for the village of Cary for Tuesday, November 15th, 2016, to order with roll call, please.
Kozler.
Here.
McAlpine.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
Cowenick. Here. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public comment section where anybody in the audience would like to address the village board on anything other than what's on the agenda. Jake is checking. Are we good, Jake? I think we're good. We'll go ahead and close public comments. Anybody else have anything to say? All right. First order of business is a discussion regarding the tax levy for the year 2016. We'll call our trusted friend, Michael.
Hello.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Michael.
We were optimistic for this evening that we would have the information from McHenry County. We have not received the numbers for the village of Cary from them. It is anticipated to be here later this week, at least that's what they've told us. But knowing the deadlines that are ahead, our actual tax levy needs to be filed with the county by the 4th Tuesday in December. So in order to make that happen, we need to bring numbers to the board and to be in compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act. We need to come up with an estimated number, and I want you to know that that is an estimated number. It is not a final number. We can adjust it downward, we can adjust it upward. That choice is ours when it comes to passage of the final levy. There are four pieces of information that we are waiting from, from the county. Number one, the number they're using for the CPI index, the current equalized assessed valuation of the entire village, the amount of new property or new development being added to that totally equalized assessed valuation, and the maximum amount that the tax levy can be increased by. As you know, in the village of Cary, we're a non-home rule community, which means we're subject to tax caps, which is basically the lesser of the CPI, or 5%. In order to come up with an estimate that we can use, and please, I want you to know that Adam Corporation Counsel has said that we need to have an estimated amount in our minutes for the meeting tonight because there is a period of 20 days where that number has to be established prior to final adoption of the tax levy. If we go take 20 days from today, brings us very close to our meeting date on December, our first board meeting in December, doesn't have to be that meeting, because it could be any other date, but in order to have that tax levy adopted by the 4th Tuesday in December. The past two years, just to give you an idea, the amount that our tax levy could be increased was approximately 1.5% above the existing levy. That's what it's worked out to be. The only factor that we were hoping would come in was the amount of new development or new property being added in the village. I can tell you from a discussion that I did have with the Elgonquin Township Assessor, I was hopeful that a portion of the Pet Corp. project would somehow appear as new property this year. Based on the fact that they haven't received any occupancy as of this date, he told me it was, there wasn't a good chance that much, if any, of that project would be considered new property for this tax levy. Because the amount that our levy could go up in the past was approximately 1.5%, if I increased our existing tax extension, which is $2,510,560, and I just estimated that it could go up by a percent and a half, it would bring our new levy number to $2,548,234. Now, please, this is not a final number by any means. I want you to know that in the past, that 1.5 included not only the new growth in the village, but it included the CPI factor. And I am no way assuming that that is something that will be looked at. It can be. As I stated earlier, there are four decisions that we can make, and that choice is totally yours. But at this point in time, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
And also, just for the record, we're in compliance, Michael, with the truth in taxation component. Can you explain what that is to the board?
Sure. Truth in taxation states that if in fact your levy exceeds 5%, that you need to post a publication in the newspaper stating what that increase above 5% is, and a hearing needs to be held on that. To simplify it for all of you this evening, the amount that we're looking at, at 1.5, the estimate, is nowhere near the 5%, where we'd be required to publish or not be in compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act.
Would you clarify a little bit about what you said about what Adam had said? That we need something in writing 20 days before?
Well, we needed a statement as to an estimated levy so that it could be determined by someone that the amount we were estimating would not be above the 5% limit, which is specified in the Truth in Taxation Act. That's all Adam was saying. We needed to come up with an estimated number if we wanted to adopt the tax levy sometime in the month of December.
Basically, though, the four choices that we have wouldn't go above the 5%, right?
Based on the information or what I know at this time, no, it would not.
Right, okay. And what exactly would be a 1.5% increase? What, give me the number, not the total number, the 2 million and the 1 million or whatever.
It would be an increase, Trustee Kraus, of $37,658.
Thank you.
If that were the case.
And that would be for CPI and new growth?
Well, I don't know the official CPI number that's being used, so I'm estimating it. And I don't know what the village's final EAV is, so I'm estimating that as well. So I'm just using 1.5, which is approximately where it's come in the last two years. In all honesty to you, I would expect the EAV for the village of Cary to go up more than the 1.5%.
I can actually help you with that, because I spoke to the assessor at 4:00 today. And this is not official, because we don't have it in writing, but they said our EAV was going to go up 7%.
Just...
So how would that affect all this?
Well, I think the portion that's important to us is, any tax increase that we impose, okay, would impact the taxpayers in the village of Cary by any amount, let's say, above the new development number, okay? Any increase in our tax levy that's associated with new growth, and we had this discussion back in October, would not impact the residents of the village of Cary because it's coming on the tax rolls from new development, and it's being paid above and beyond what's been paid in the past. Any increase to somebody's individual assessment, just assuming the value of their property went up, if in fact the village's tax rate went up, it would then apply to that. That is not considered new development or new growth. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. So if the EAVs go up, people pay more property taxes, so in effect, our tax rate with the levy goes down?
Well, it depends on what our actual rate is. And please, let's have this discussion again. We are just one component of that. I mean, I think it is safe to say, or at least from my experience doing what I do, that there are a good amount of people in the village of Cary who somehow assume that every tax dollar that's being paid on their property tax bill is somehow funneling through the village of Cary, which is not true at all. We are one of many taxing bodies, the biggest of which are probably schools, who are receiving the bulk of the money from McHenry County.
I'm just going to throw this out there.
Please.
Maybe you can educate me or us on what this does as far as new growth, but they said our new growth would be in at $708,829. So how does that equate as far as a percentage? Do you have any idea?
In terms of a percentage, I don't. To shed some light in the past, I believe when I looked at last year's new growth number, it was 1.3 or 1.5 million dollars. So $700,000 of new growth would be considerably less than what even we had last year.
Okay.
If I were to assume, I mean, I don't know...
And what was the percentage last year about?
4% and change.
4%?
In the EAV, equalized assessed valuation went up approximately 4%.
And that was the first increase we'd seen in, say, the prior five years by memory?
But, but please understand, in that case, if the EAV or the equalized assessed valuation went up for the entire village, and the village's tax rate was unchanged, that same tax levy was being spread over a much greater base. And there would have probably, as from the 1.5 million of new growth, there were new taxpayers that were paying a portion of that. As soon as I have the final information, I'd very easily, in the course of five minutes, be able to tell you what's related to new growth, how much is related to CPI, and we'd be able to have a much better discussion than we're having right now.
Okay. How would the board like us to proceed at this point?
Well, I think if we can have a better discussion, we have more information, I'd wait for the more information then.
Our intent was not to, is, come up with a final number that we were going to use as a tax, for the tax levy this evening without that information.
Yeah, I guess my input on that, Mayor, and Chris, is what are we looking to do? Are we looking to vote on this at the next meeting, or?
I can answer that. I don't believe it's possible because of the delay that we have. Typically, we've made a decision on the levy with a vote, the first meeting in December, passed boards, right or wrong, did not want to have it be to the last minute at the second meeting in December. With this delay that we've received in terms of verifying information, you know, as long as you make some decision on the, on the second meeting in December, it should be fine. Again, typically, we would pass it December 6th, but that's subject to your decision.
I would tend to agree that we need to have a little bit concrete numbers so we can make a well-informed decision. I don't think it'll be that complicated. I think that you going over some of this, the details, because that's the most complicated part, is for everyone to wrap their arms around, how is this really calculated? What impacts what? How is it going to work if new growth goes up? Is it going to increase? No, I think one of the questions that came up the last time was that with new growth, was that going to somehow impact our taxpayers and that they were going to have to pay a higher tax burden? I think that was some of the questions that came up at the last meeting that Trustee Kozler had indicated. And I think that if we get our arms around how that all works, I think we're going to be able to, you know, go through with the firm numbers and, and go through it and figure out what we can do.
Just to give you some idea, too, just reference, last year, the CPI went up 0.8%, which would have allowed us to increase our levy last year by $20,850. The amount related to the new growth would have allowed us to increase our tax levy $13,716. Now, Trustee Kozler, related to that $700,000 number you received from the township assessor, I was uncertain, and I was not told if that was actual construction value or if that was equalized assessed value. Equalized assessed value being 1/3 of market value. So if it was equalized assessed value, that $700,000 would be three times that in terms of actual construction value.
I think it's important to have a little bit more discussion solely from the standpoint of making sure you have the right analysis brought to you in December so you can make a decision, so we're not missing pieces. We've tried to bring to you some building blocks of a decision. We talked about the three-year fiscal forecast and the general fund. We talked about, in more than one occasion, the police pension aspect. As we all know, our budget workshop is in February, March typically, where we talk about capital improvements, buildings, those sorts of things. And the point of that all is not to somehow back you into a decision to raise a levy. It's fact points to help you make a good decision, whichever it is. So is there any other analysis or data that would be helpful so that we come prepared December 6? We would put this back on the agenda December 6, not for a vote, but to further flesh out the decision.
Well, I'm sure that once you get the final figures from the assessor's office, you can plug these all in, and we'll have a much better picture.
In no time at all.
Right. So that, you know, that's, that's the critical element here, and I just want to make sure that for the public's point of view, as well as boards, that everybody has to understand how the taxing process works. And there seems to be, there was always seems to be some sort of misunderstanding of the new growth and how that impacts the regular Joes that already pay their taxes. That just adds to the pie. And I think that that's, that's good information.
Very good.
To be have out. Any other questions for Michael about taxes? So I'm sure we'll get some sort of a memo from you by the end of the week.
Depending on when the information comes in.
Yeah, we're not going to set a date for when it comes in because we need to get the information first and do it. So we presume it's coming tomorrow. We spoke with the office today. We heard that the Park District had some preliminary numbers that weren't far from what Trustee Kozler had said, but we'd like to see it in writing. So we'll get it out when it's ready as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Chief, you're up. Let's talk about fines and costs applicable to ordinance violations.
I appreciate that. If I promised a riveting...
He says with a smile on his face.
I promised a riveting presentation last time I was up and...
You got shot down.
I got shot down. So now we'll talk about fines and costs. And just to refresh your recollection in regards to how we get here, is we had put together a amendment to the ordinance, the village code, in regards to left-wheeler curb, trespass, and stop intersection, one of which is Janus and Cary Street, so that we could make it a four-way stop. And with that came the fact that we had to adjust or amend the fine schedule that was associated with those new ordinances that were enacted. And there was discussion at the board level as it relates to, having seen the whole fine schedule, that there was some comments made in regards to perhaps, for example, drug paraphernalia should be a higher amount than it was. Because at that time, the, the, oh, thanks, I... Fine schedule shows that, you know, the minimum fine for drug paraphernalia is $250, but when we go into our local code, the actual minimum fine is $750. So, but that was, Trustee Cavelli had indicated that there should be probably a higher rate or a higher fine for that particular offense or violation. So a couple of things I want to talk about before we delve into the information that you were provided. You were provided the whole fine schedule. And understand that that fine schedule is used for the original offense, and then 10 days after that original offense, it generally doubles. And then if it's a must appear, then there's nothing in the first two, and then there'll be a minimum fine, and that requires someone to appear. They have to show up at our administrative adjudication process. I would attribute that, or I would say that that is payment in lieu of prosecution. That's how I would say it, but that's, there's another number of ways to indicate what that schedule means. But we have some restrictions, because we're a non-home rule entity, that our highest fine that we can assess is $750. That's because we're not a home rule unit. Now, when we get to our next item, and that is the cannabis and drug paraphernalia, civil law violations now, you'll see that there was an article by, that was in the Northwest Herald, that reflected what Crystal Lake assessed for fines, and they were pretty significant. And that's because they're not bound by that 750 limit. So just, so we understand that in regards to the limits that we can set fines for. In regards to, the reason that I'd like to kind of go over this is for consistency, because certainly when we start talking about this, and I'll talk more about it, but there's parking violations, and then there's equipment violations for vehicles. The parking violations generally have a first offense fine of $25, and it goes up to $50. But a vehicle that has a taillight out has a $50 fine, and it goes up to $100. And my question would be to you, is what's more important? You know, parking in a fire lane, which might be a life safety issue, or, you know, an equipment violation? So you're only charging, or you're only assessing a fine of $25 and $50 for that parking violation that could be parking in a fire lane, but you're assessing a $50 fine for an equipment violation? So we'll talk about consistency in the, a logical assignment of fines as it relates to, perhaps, you might have heard through the Illinois Vehicle Code, that handicap parking fine is up to $350. But we only charge $250, but let's not be crazy here for a minute, because when you change that, and I believe my, oh, Brian Simmons isn't here today, but if Brian was here, he would tell you that we would have to go and make sure that people post that new fine. So when you assess a higher fine, especially as it relates to handicap parking, there might be some unintended consequences. And that is that now all your businesses have to change their signage to reflect that new fine that you're going to assess. So I, you know, we have to keep that in the back of our mind, too, and the fact that our building and zoning economic development section would have to go out and enforce that.
Chief.
Sir.
Do they currently post what the fine is?
They have to.
It's already posted there.
Yeah, they have to. And that's one of those unintended consequences. You know, we might think, yeah, that's a great thing, because a $350 fine, people shouldn't be parking in those handicap parking spots, but then it requires all the property owners to change that signage.
So if, like out at Jewel, if I park in a handicap, handicap spot, it says what the fine is on the sign?
It should.
I've never parked in one, so I don't know. But it does? Okay, I just thought it's...
It should. It's got to be, it's necessary for us to enforce it.
Okay.
And if it's not, then we should go to them and say that they have to post the $250 fine because...
Who pays for those signs?
The property owner.
The property owner, okay.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying, is if we change certain things where, you know, there's a burden on the property owner, maybe it's not in our best interest to change those fines. So, you know, we talked about philosophy, we talked about difference between fines and statute. We can be more restrictive, okay? We can't be less restrictive to the state statute. So that is why, when you saw the article about the cannabis in Crystal Lake, they could have a higher fine, not a lower fine. But there's also a concern, because as you saw in the New Lennox article, that a mistake, an honest mistake, can make it less restrictive, and then you have to go back and amend it again. And of course, what we're talking about here is administrative adjudication. And we have a process that we pay a hearing officer, and we have our staff staffed it. And you might ask, why is that important to us? And it's important for a couple of different reasons, because we write these administrative adjudication citations into that process. So there's a hearing officer, currently it's an individual named Dave Eternow, and he will listen to, you know, the facts of the matter and run our decision, and he'll indicate someone's liable or not liable and assess a fine. But that fine, when we go through our administrative adjudication process, comes to Cary. If we write it into Woodstock as a state violation, a state code violation, then we only get a portion of the fine that comes back. So I don't like talking about fines, because that's not really the purpose of a police department, but it's an evil thing that we have to talk about as it relates to the type of revenue generation, number one. And then my good friend, Mike Ducharme, likes me when I start talking that way. There's a burden on the prosecution side of things as it relates to, Mike just likes money. That's what it is.
Got to fund those pensions, guys.
The other part of the issue when it comes to prosecution is a burden. Proof beyond a reasonable doubt is probably like 80, 85% that we have to prove that someone is guilty of doing something. When you write something as a civil law violation, all you need is a pattern and city evidence. So you need a burden, our burden shifts to about 50.1 to say that someone was more likely than not to have committed this violation. So our administrative adjudication process is an advantage to us in regards to that threshold or burden of proof. It's convenient, our administrative adjudication process, because the individual that receives the violation here comes for a hearing here. So there's, you know, some degree of convenience to the individual, and I will tell you for us also, because our personnel are in the village, number one. And number two, you know, we keep them in the village if they have to appear and testify. They can pay by paying a fine in lieu of appearance, which is more convenient for these individuals. And our complaint, you know, we use something called administrative adjudication citation, and it's a process that we issue a complaint because the basis of all of our criminal justice is that you're noticed and you have a right to a hearing, notice and a hearing. So we have to give them a notice, and then we write them into our administrative adjudication process, but we don't have to take bail, there's no fingerprinting, things of that nature. It's a pretty simple process to get them into this for these violations that we've identified, that we would hear into our administrative adjudication process. Any questions in regards to this so far?
What was it that brought up? You said in the beginning, the four-way stop at Janus was what prompted this review of these fines and everything?
What happened was, we amended the village code. And we amended it so that we would have a payment in lieu of prosecution for a left-wheeler curb violation. We, it was left-wheeler curb trespass on the railroad property, and then the stop intersection. But when we enacted those violations, then on the left-wheeler curb and the trespass, because we can write them both into administrative adjudication, we amended the fine schedule. So the fine schedule was attached to that amended ordinance, and that was what kind of got us talking about the fines in regards to, maybe we need to talk about adjusting fines in regards to being... fines in regards to being consistent in the, uh, perceived seriousness of the.
Adjudication, administration adjudication process, yeah. Okay, I get it.
So, um, a couple of things that I saw when I looked at this fine schedule was, for example, alcohol possession, the minimum fine is $250, and it's a must appear. So, you can't pay that in lieu of prosecution, you have to show for that. Most of the building code violations are either $75, and then $150, or $50 and $100. The public peace issues, which I find very interesting, is, um, they're a must appear, like battery, you know, when you do physical harm to somebody, it's $150, and it's a must appear, but parking in a handicap parking spot or whatever is $250. So, you have someone doing physical harm to somebody, and it's only a $150 fine for that particular offense. There's something called, uh, person responsible for premise unlawful activity. It's really our equivalent of social hosting, parental responsibility, the minimum fine for that's $500. And then most of the, uh, like the possession of drug paraphernalia, right now, is $250, but our ordinance indicates $750, and the only reason that our ordinance indicates $750 is because the state statute indicates that that's a $750 fine, so it's mandated by the state statute. And interestingly enough, under a state charge, before they changed the cannabis violation to civil law violation, the drug paraphernalia charge was more important than the possession of cannabis charge. So, it was, the cannabis was less serious than the pipe that you would have somebody, um, in possession of. Parking in, uh, fire lanes are 25 and 50, our equipment violations are 50 and 100, with the exception of, uh, if you're using a wireless telephone, then it's 75 and 150, and then our weight restriction on West Main is 75 and 150. And then there are some violations that don't have that acceleration in regards to the 10-day, uh, payment, and that would be sprinkling violations, they're 75 and 75, and the failure to obtain a building permit, which is 50 and 50. So, I, I come to you to ask some direction in regards to, um, how you would like to see the fine schedule laid out? You know, do you, should we make all of the violations that are vehicle-related, parking and equipment, the same? So, make them 50 and 100, or make them 25 and 50? You know, are we looking at, for example, the, um, trespass to rail property is 100 and 200, and we made it 100 and 200 for the rail property, because I tried to stay consistent in regards to that, um, schedule, or, you know, the philosophy? So, that's what I, you know, because we had that discussion as it related to, um, that amended ordinance, I ask if there's any, um, concern or input that you'd like to see in regards to adjusting the fine schedule, because I'm going to bring that forward again when we do the cannabis, uh, possession ordinance.
The thing I see is that the adjudication process really hasn't paid for itself, except for those towing fees, the $500 tow fees, that's what really makes it profitable to have it in-house. Am I wrong?
Well, it's, yes, I, I think part of it is just that, our, um, we have to have the process to have the administrative toes, because again, I go back to that basic premise that you, you must have a notice of a violation and the ability to have a hearing. So, the administrative adjudication hearing officer, he fulfills that requirement for due process. So, we would have to have it anyways, but in regards to some of these items that we normally write into, and cannabis will be one of them, uh, that we tend to write into, we, we've had, if you've watched the, um, statistics I present, we've kind of had, it's not a real big uptick, but there's been some increases in the possession of cannabis that we can write into a local, um, our administrative adjudication process, but the other part that is advantageous for us is that there's kind of a diminished evidence requirement, where if I took it to state, a state charge, I would take that sample of cannabis and send it to the, uh, state lab. Someone would have to analyze it and say it was cannabis, and then I'd have to bring it back to the, um, uh, court, and then we would present that as evidence that this was cannabis. Under this new civil law violation, either a field test or a police officer relying on his experience and training could attest to the fact that he believed it was cannabis. So, there's, and it comes back to that burden of proof issue, and it's a little bit easier to prosecute in an administrative adjudication process, but these are not serious violations, these are more of our less serious violations, and what we need to do is determine, you know, what's the hierarchy in regards to the seriousness of these violations that we're talking about.
But the administrative adjudication process was something that the Village of Cary created, created this ordinance, so that we would be able to do it in-house, thinking that it was going to be a good thing?
Well, I still think it is a good thing.
Well, okay.
Guess it's a matter of opinion.
Exactly. And the only thing that's really been keeping it afloat has been these $500 tow fees, basically. And now we're looking at trying to increase fees above and beyond what the current fees are to try to, I, the way I'm looking at it is to justify administrative adjudication in the Village of Cary.
Oh, no, I, I would, I would disagree with that statement.
Okay, thank you, so please enlighten me then, okay?
I would disagree with that statement, and I was more looking at it from a standpoint of consistency. I was more looking at it from a standpoint of, you know, is, is a minimum fine of $500 something that, you know, trust me, police officers are people, contrary to popular belief, and they don't like to write something that they think is excessive, and that would have a chilling effect on, you know, some of that enforcement, because they know that they're going to be issuing, uh, violation for, you know, maybe the, uh, social hosting, where the minimum fine is $500. Going into it, they know that, you know, if that person is found liable, that's their minimum fine. So, you know, I think that that's part of the issue here, is to try to make this palatable, because people also, you know, the public at large, they don't like anything that's excessive, because they won't buy into it, right? I, I know I wouldn't, so I think that's the other part of this equation, is try to make this logical and consistent. And that's why I, you know, I use the example of the parking and the equipment, you know, the equipment violation for a vehicle. You know, the equipment violation for a vehicle, absent brakes, are kind of minor, right? But parking in a fire lane, in my mind, is a lot more serious offense than perhaps, you know, having, you know, a taillight out or a loud muffler. And that's all I'm saying is, you know, and then I, I'm selfish in terms of administering a police department, because if we make it all one, you know, if we say, okay, from this point forward, it's going to be 25 and 50, or 50 and 100, then it's easy for the officer on the street to remember what that, uh, fine is when they issue that citation and assign it to that vehicle.
So, are you saying now that it's kind of arbitrary in terms of what an officer would assign a fine if they pull somebody over for a taillight? They, how do they determine then from the minimum to the maximum? What is, how do they determine?
No, no, it's not, it has nothing to do with the officer. All the officer does is identify the violation. When we come to the administrative adjudication process, that's where your due process kicks in, and they present their evidence that there was a violation, and the hearing officer allows the other party to present information, and he makes that determination. The police officer doesn't assign fines, he doesn't do anything like that. All he does is identify the violation and write it into either state court or the administrative adjudication process. Now, he does have some discretion as it relates to what path to follow, but, for example, if you stop somebody for, um, equipment violation, and you subsequently determine that this individual is under influence of alcohol, you would write that citation as a state charge, because you'll follow the DUI through the state process in Woodstock. So, there's that part of the equation as it relates to administering, you know, charging of these individuals, but no, under no circumstance would I say that I'm trying to justify the administrative adjudication process. What I'm trying to do is, there was discussion in regards to, you know, a, uh, comment as it related to a violation that, you know, one of the members of the board thought was kind of low, and I said, okay, well, we can talk about that. I think that's fair.
Who's assigning the fine, then? I mean, you were saying you wanted to like.
You. You. Okay. I think you might, might answer some of your questions, but if you look at, in your packet under Exhibit A, when it lists all the different violations and.
I did look at the packet, Mark, okay?
I'm just.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'm assuming that you did, but if you look at a couple of the, he's, I believe he's referencing some of the, for instance, the, um, taillights. If you look on, I don't, it's on, the first thing is handicap parking, he's got that bolded, is, should that be brought up to the regular violations, like when, when he was talking about the rear taillight being out, or, you know, something else that's, having done with, there's something wrong with the car, a violation of that? I believe that's what you're looking for, is the consistency to just have it, have everything at the same level.
If we're at a, a very similar type of violation, do we assess a similar fine for it? That's what I'm really looking for in regards to direction. And the fact that I'm going to be bringing, uh, amended ordinance in regards to, we had a drug paraphernalia ordinance, but now the new civil law violation related to possession of cannabis allows us to have a possession of cannabis under 10 grams violation, you're going to see the amended fine schedule again, and if we don't want to change it, that's, you know, that's certainly up to you, but it's not me that assigns this, it's the board.
When I heard you talking, though, it sounded like you were saying that you wanted to make it easier for the officer, so when they do write the citation, they know what they're writing it for.
Sure, absolutely.
And then it comes, and then they know what the, basically, then, then it kind of, I heard after that, like what the fine was going to be.
Sure.
Why do we have these minimums and maximums, then? Who's determining what the minimum and what the maximum is?
Previous boards must have identified it.
But how is it determined when somebody's standing out there, say you're sitting here and Otero is sitting here, who determines what is the minimum, what's the maximum? How do they determine what the fine is going to be?
It's in the ordinance, but he can, when it comes before him, assess a fine up to $750.
Okay, so it's arbitrary.
It's really based on the due process portion of the, you know, um, enforcement of that particular violation. You know, and it's certainly, there's other factors that apply to this, like if it was a battery and there was damage to somebody's clothing, he would require restitution for, for that, you know, that might be another thing, or, um, there might be a condition associated with, uh, building code violation where it comes, because they write the building code violations into this process, and he, the, um, hearing officer can say, you have to have it corrected by whatever, and put a condition on it that way. Our counsel today, right before I came here, had suggested maybe we want to talk about, with the cannabis violations, some type of education, so we could talk about assigning people to, you know, uh, seek treatment or education as part of that rather than a fine, especially if, the other part of this equation is that with local ordinance violations, you can charge juveniles into that, where you don't, you have to petition them into court, or you can charge juveniles into the administrative adjudication process, and because, you know, we, there's no jail time associated with it or no confinement, that our burden is greatly reduced. And that's what I, you know, we were looking at some discussion here in regards to where we want to go, how amend the fine schedule so that everyone's, you know, that's acceptable to everyone, and I'll bring it forward, so that I don't have to do it more than once.
Quick question, what, do you have an idea of what some of the local surrounding communities are charging for some of these fees? Have we compared anything, just out of curiosity? Not that we're trying to say exactly what another community's doing, but if we're charging $25 for something and our neighbors are charging 75, it may behoove us to really, you know, look at redoing some of our fine structure. I just don't know.
You know, I didn't do that before we did this. I can, if, if, if that's useful, I, I can tell you that in the information that I provided from Crystal Lake, they did just that for that cannabis law violation.
Well, I mean, I, again, I'm looking at this, and to me, administrative adjudication might seem, and I think those are great questions that trustee Kraus brought up, but I think that if it gives us a little bit more control here, that that is more cost-effective, and that, um, it's also better for our residents if something happens and they have the ability to come here versus McHenry County for something.
Well, it's Woodstock, they have to go to Woodstock.
Right, to the Woodstock, to the courthouse there. But I, I do think that we probably should be revisiting things like, I think parking in a handicap zone is, is something that should be a higher fine than something, you know, you just had a taillight out. I, I do think that we should set that.
Well, the handicap is, it's 250, but I'm talking fire lane.
Okay, fire lane, same type of thing, parking in a fire lane where it could be, you know, you can't get a emergency vehicle in, you know, that should be re-looked at. I don't think we had to change the handicap and change all the signs, I mean, we want to keep that.
And that's what, I didn't want to go down a road where there's some unintended consequences.
Right, I, I agree with that, but I really meant, uh, the parking in the fire lane there. I do think that we should revisit some of those things. I think that consistency would be easier all around for everybody. Um, but I just don't know how long ago these were done, I don't know where they are in comparison to, um, what's happening out there, what's, what's the norm?
I'm trying to think here.
Yeah.
We can, we can collect some data, we can bring back some recommendations, we wanted to first bounce it off the committee of the whole and get some feedback, doesn't have to be decided tonight.
Right, I think it's a good idea.
But we'd like to get your, you know, feedback, so we bring you back, you know, in a well-thought-out way, what you want.
Yeah, the only thing, oh, just to clarify, chief, the, the fines that are bolded and underlined, are those new?
Yeah, that was, when I submitted that amended ordinance, they, they were added. And I tried to stay consistent with what was there with, like, violations, so that's why the left-wheeler curb, see, what we did when we codified our code is we adopted the only vehicle code in its entirety, so it's technically an ordinance violation, but without having it identified in that fine schedule for that payment in lieu of prosecution, we couldn't write it as kind of, you know, like a parking ticket. So, that's why we had to add it. And those were things that, you know, as you go along and you start using this, you figure out, hey, wait a minute, we didn't add that to the code when we, you know, codified it. So, that, that's more housekeeping, but for example, the trespass to rail property, you know, the rail property, that, I looked at the other trespass violations and said I just made it the same as the other ones. But I would also tell you that trespassing on rail property probably has a component of danger that trespassing on somebody's lawn doesn't have.
Right.
I, um, you know, I like uniform, uniformity and keeping everything consistent, but I, I would have to bow to you and your experience on most of these fines and put it in your hands, and I think personally speaking, for me, it would help if, maybe the route would be to come up with a new fine schedule or whatever you suggest, and we can compare side by side before a meeting, maybe email it to us all individually, and maybe each of the trustees could give some feedback, so that you could come back with one version and say, this is what pretty much everybody's thinking.
And I will tell you that the conduit that I'll use to collect the data will be the Northwest Municipal Conference, we do, uh, those type of surveys all the time, so I'll ask them, you know, general categories of fines and what they charge, and we have to do this periodically, because, you know, if someone thought it's cheaper to park here and then take the train in versus paying for, you know, parking downtown, you know, that's a risk that you take. So, but yeah, I can absolutely do some data collection for you.
That's just my suggestion, I don't know if, if everybody else here agrees with that, but it would help me out personally.
And there's a lot of information to digest here, there really is, and you have to be, you know, comfortable looking at the municipal codes to kind of correlate it back and forth, because, you know, one, it's, you know, the numbers there are the section numbers that you have to go back to in your, your code to determine, you know, what the violation is and what it says in the narrative of that particular section, and that sometimes gets lost, too, when you're changing or codifying things. So, it's just a attention to detail thing that's kind of tedious.
Sure. From a, from a cost analysis, I'm going to defer to Michael here, because he likes money. Is it, is it something where it's an easy thing to gather documentation and say, what is the profit and loss, so to speak, when we adjudicate? That we can kind of lump it all together, because I think trustee Kraus was asking, is it profitable or is it not profitable?
Well, we've gotten those numbers before, so it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I'm not, I mean, I just think that would be helpful, too, just get a rough. I mean, I just think that would be helpful too, just get a rough idea of where it's at and stuff, if it's not too complicated.
I think it's just a matter of, I think the data that was accumulated before referred to violations that were out there, violations that were collected.
Sure.
Of course, that's, we're always able to put that together. I don't know that this necessarily the same issue we're talking about here in terms of establishing the fines.
No, two separate issues, I would agree.
All right, thank you for your comments. We'll move to a discussion concerning cannabis possession and fines and costs.
Okay, I'll say kind of ditto on what I was just talking about, number one, but in your packet, there's a draft ordinance that we put together with the assistance of legal counsel as it relates to amending what used to be section or chapter 9.36. It used to be just drug paraphernalia, now it would be entitled cannabis possession and drug paraphernalia. This comes about because there was a change in the statute as it relates to possession of cannabis under 10 grams, and the legislature in Illinois made it a civil law violation. But it also has a section in the, the code, or the statute, or public act that was passed, that allows municipalities to maintain their own violations for that similar offense. So what we have is, there's language here that, I must say, I was told I did a pretty good job on this, so I was, I was happy about that.
You did a great job.
But for example, the administrat, you know, we, we talk about under 10 grams, I made sure that that was the case, so we didn't end up making it less restrictive instead of more restrictive. The admissibility of cannabis in terms of either a field test or based on the officer's training and experience, and then the drug paraphernalia, because what we had will no longer fit with the new civil law violation, because if it was a violation with 10 grams or less of cannabis, then the pipe or paraphernalia that's associated with that now becomes a lesser offense. But if they have more than 10 grams, then it reverts back to it being a class A misdemeanor with a minimum fine of $750 in the state code, which would be reflected in ours, because that's what it said before. And so when you look at this, by the way, anything that struck out is just that, you know, it's a change, anything that's underlying is new language. So that's just the way these things are kind of written, and it kind of gives you a little bit of idea of what changed and what didn't. And then finally, you know, what I didn't do is assess a fine, because the state fine for a similar violation is $100 and $200. I think it's $100, and then if it's paid within 30 days, unless it's, if it's paid over 30 days, then I think it goes to $200. But again, when you write it into a state court or Woodstock, that the issues become the version of the fine monies in terms of where it goes. And the other part of that equation on the state charge, why, for the civil, the cannabis charge, is that there's a requirement, and it's an affirmative requirement on our side, that we have to expunge it. So after six months, we would have to expunge all cannabis violations that were written under the state charge in six months. And it would be our responsibility, and part of the state law now assesses a small fine that is associated, that's given to the village to make sure that that occurs. The ordinance violation, and I would have to talk to the village attorney, but I will tell you that according to the clerk of the circuit court, that ordinance violation doesn't have that expungement requirement. So from my standpoint, it's a less, you know, it's less burdensome for us to write the law ordinance charge for the cannabis possession versus writing the state charge for the cannabis possession. But, and the other part of that equation is, because it's an affirmative requirement, we would have, you know, if there was a charge that maybe wasn't expunged and it meant somebody not getting a job or something like that, there could be a potential for a claim against us for some adverse action against that person, because that was available and it should have been available. So the question really is, what levels of fine do you think should be associated with the possession of cannabis under 10 grams?
How much is 10 grams?
Very small amount.
10 grams, sorry.
I was just waiting for somebody to say that. Was it like-
It's 28, 28 grams to an ounce. So if it's 28 grams to an ounce, 10 grams makes about a third of, makes about a third of an ounce.
A third of, okay.
So less than, either a third, you know, or less than a third of an ounce. And you learned that because everything's in kilograms and stuff like that, so I remember 28 grams to an ounce.
And are, the current steps that we have now and the current violations, what's the typical amount that's recovered?
In regards to-
Cannabis.
Oh.
Does it usually come to that?
Well, probably, you know, that, that's a good question, I don't know it off the top of my head. I would say that it's probably somewhere around 10 grams or under, so a lot of the incidents that we encounter cannabis possession, we would be able to write into the administrative adjudication process.
Good.
So if we were pulled over and we didn't have a village ordinance and it went to Woodstock, the maximum fine would be $200?
Correct.
And we're looking to be able to write in the Village of Cary up to $750?
You can.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's the right amount.
Right.
And if you looked at the information that was provided by the Crystal Lake, they did some-
They did a whole thing.
Research in terms of, you know, comparing both municipalities that are in this area and then some of the collar counties like Schaumburg and things, you know, Cook County agencies. And what Crystal Lake proposed was, and I don't like this, I'm going to tell you I don't, I don't like having a graduated fine schedule, where I have to determine if somebody, it's a first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense, because it's hard to determine that. You know, you'd have to do research and how do you write the right charge. So I prefer just to have a flat, this is the fine for this violation versus trying to do that. But what the Village of Crystal Lake did, or City of Crystal Lake, I'm sorry, is for the first offense, it's 300 and 500, and then the second offense is 600 and 1,000, and then the third offense or subsequent offenses, it's 1,200 to 2,000. But they can do that because they're home rule.
Right.
And the discussion that they had, at least in the article, of course, you know, there's always two sides to every story, and I, you know, I don't know the, what all the discussion was, but there was a feeling of, at least by some members of the board, that because this isn't going to be a state charge and it doesn't go on, you know, they don't get fingerprinted for it and things of that nature, that they would be, you know, the offset to that would be a higher fine.
Right. I think there's some rationale with that. If someone says that I'm not going to have it on, you know, the possibility of being fingerprinted and have it on my record if I made a mistake, that I can, I can, I can swallow the fact that we might impose a little bit higher fine for something like that.
And the first, second, and third offense, who's determining that? That's when they come before, does Crystal Lake do administrative adjudication?
Yes.
So that's, that's to her determine there, that they figure that out, it's not the officer on the road saying, okay, we have to look it up and-
It could be.
Right.
It could be, and that's why it makes it so much, so difficult, is because you have to do that research to write the proper charge, because again, when you issue this notice, you assign, you know, the fine amounts where, you know, you pay this, and then after 10 days it goes to that, so you have to know what the proper amount is to put in there. So it makes it difficult to do.
Right. Currently, between like the State of Illinois in terms of a DUI and the Village of Cary, what is the difference between those two fines?
We don't, we, we bring the DUIs to state court.
It automatically-
Yeah.
Because I mean, I think marijuana is heading down that same road. I mean, it's, the bell is rung, I mean, to be honest with you. So I think it's just, this is something we're kind of doing as a stopgap to try to get this money in before the whole country changes, so.
Well, no, I think there would still be a violation-
Because, I mean, then the Village of Cary currently, if we're saying what we're going to implement now would be for marijuana, that we would be able to collect fines, but for a DUI, we don't. But I think if, eventually when, I think the country goes the, the way it's going, wouldn't it be the same thing then, or would we still be able to?
I'm not certain, certain that Illinois is looking at going down the recreational path.
Well, I know, I know.
But we have a medical use.
But that, that ball has started rolling, I think it's-
Yeah, and I understand that, but there would still be individuals that probably wouldn't, I'm certain, that they wouldn't be able to possess it. You know, there, you know, people under 21, for example, just like alcohol.
Right.
And you'd still have to address those type of issues.
So that's what I'm just trying to say, is why can't we try to look at what we do with alcohol and try to mirror that in terms of, with the cannabis?
Okay, well, that, that violation would be $250.
Okay, that, that's what I'd be in favor of.
Do you know what you need to do?
I, I, well, any other-
I have a question.
Sure.
I mean, I know that this, this is sort of already giving into, it's not a criminal offense anymore, it's a civil thing, but let's just say, for instance, a family, let's say Junior gets caught for this, and we fine him $750. What if they can't afford to pay the fine?
Well, they, they can be put on a schedule that they can pay it by, you know, payments, number one, but that was the other part of that equation that I was talking about in regards to education or treatment, because that was what our, Megan Mack, I think was the attorney's name, she had suggested that we look at a program similar to Lake County that, in those particular circumstances, where you know that the violator isn't going to be, you know, paying the fine, that you assign them to some other type of alternate punishment, so that, you know, maybe it's education or counseling. And the suggestion that they, one, one suggestion was an online course, which is called Third Millennium. And then I also contacted a local counseling area on Industrial Drive, and they were talking about $150 for like four sessions. But there's issues related to licensing and adolescents, most, at least the individual I spoke to only had a license or certification for 18 and over and not a license for adolescents. So that was kind of a last minute thing, but I certainly think that that's an option in regards to a certain class of violator that we say, okay, that's an option that we should give the hearing officer to make as an alternate, you know, assignment or sentence.
Yeah, I, I'm good with that, I mean, as far as juveniles go.
Definitely like that.
Once they're adults, I don't think it's going to help, but-
Well, I need, it's similar to, if you get a traffic, you go to traffic school, right, if you get a traffic, sometimes, I mean, I think that's great an education component.
I just, I don't know, $750 is a lot of money, and I think we're pushing the limits on that, and it's going to get to a point where it's really hurting families for something that probably isn't causing a lot of pain to the community by and large.
And we want to make an impression, but we don't want it to be significant, number one. So I will assess, I will write this ordinance similar to an alcohol possession.
Thank you, Chief.
I told you it would be riveting.
And it was. Next, we have a village clerk who'd like to offer up a couple of different things.
Well, first on the agenda for me is talking about our upgrading our video live streaming. What I'm proposing, or maybe Jake can chime in here if he needs to, I, I like the YouTube because it is free and everybody can see it, but I think it might be time to look at the next step on what we can do to do the live streaming and how much that might be. Something for the board to discuss, at least a discussion now, and maybe come budget time, talk about it even more. But I would like to kind of discuss it and include the rest of the board too at some point, or maybe get their opinion on it. I don't know how everybody feels about that. Maybe there is one component for the next step, instead of going to a larger portion of live streaming, you know? I don't know, Jake.
One comment that I'll make before he steps up to the podium is, it's good timing to tell us to do it now, because we can bring proposals to the budget workshop. That doesn't mean you have to accept them, but it will take, you know, 60, 90 days of homework to bring information to you so you can make a decision. Obviously, if you have no interest in doing it, tell us now and we'll move forward, but there has been somewhat of an evolution of this. YouTube was designed to be step one, and we're glad to answer any other optional questions that you might have, but it might make some sense to look at those numbers.
Because I know we discussed it before, and there were different options, but I'm just thinking instead of a huge option and huge cost, maybe there is something that we can do as far as a smaller version?
Yeah, absolutely. It kind of depends on what the board is interested in proceeding with. Right now, I mean, the YouTube option is, you know, the basic option that's out there right now. I'm actually meeting tomorrow with Granicus. I didn't know we were going to discuss this tonight, but had set up a meeting with Granicus to start getting some information, and Granicus is a company that does live streaming, agenda management for many communities, and that's something, a more robust solution that the village board could consider.
What that is, is it integrates the agenda process into the, the video and the streaming, so that there is more of a even better public information component, where you can click through the agenda and skip video, and it, there's business procedures that help you process your agenda with less paper and more efficiency for public access.
Exactly. It's, it's much more fluid as far as someone that wants to look at an agenda item, they can click on that specific item in, say, the agenda or in the minutes, and it would take them directly to that portion of the video where the discussion is occurring right now. With YouTube, and some of you have probably navigated that right now, it's a little bit cumbersome where if you want to get to a particular agenda item that's being discussed, you have to kind of scroll and find exactly where that is, you know, discussed. And so there are options out there, it just depends on what the board is interested in. You know, right now, you know, the system, it's not perfect, you know, I think it, it does the job to 80% level. I think there's some board members that have expressed interest to proceed further, and you know, with that in mind, we're trying to get some pricing here from Granicus and look at some other options and be prepared to talk about it during the budget time.
Be something I would definitely be in favor of, looking at different options. I know we've had some issues with trustees that are out-
Right.
-trying to telecommute, so to speak, if that could be part of the whole equation.
That would be, that's something that we're looking at. It, it, a little bit separate, I understand where you're, where you're coming from. I think now we've been in working with Trustee Kostler, I think that we have a solution that, that might work a little bit better now, but I was open to looking at other ideas with that, so.
We also have, as you may recall, we're finalizing terms with Village of Glencoe on our joint IT agreement, and they're a community distance from us, but from a size standpoint, similar, and maybe a step ahead of us with technology and access to equipment, and there may be some, shall we say, synergies with some of what they have, where we might be able to share information and not duplicate work. So we'll use that option as well.
I think it's a natural progression that we should look at. We want to stay on top of technology, because it's only going to keep getting, going to keep moving forward, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, everybody knows I've been a huge proponent of this, and a year ago was pushing hard for Granicus, but we didn't get it. I, I want to proceed on this path, and I hope we do, and, and I think Granicus also does some things with agenda management within staff, right?
Yes.
There's, there's other tools in that that'll help staff prepare agendas and such.
Yeah, without question, there'd be some, well, not some, there would be many benefits for village staff in putting the agendas together and getting the information out, and if changes were made, it's sent out and changes are flagged. I just, you know, it's a great product, it's just not, it's not a cheap solution. It is fairly expensive, but it, it does the job, it really does a good job.
Well, I think what, last year they were saying around 12,000 was the quote, and I didn't, I didn't know this was going to come up, I'm just pulling this off the top of my head, but-
Yeah, yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't aware we were going to discuss either, so.
I shocked everybody.
But we'll get it tomorrow, I mean, we'll ask for it, because we've got the vendor coming in, and there is more than one option. The Granicus model, I've used it, my prior employer, and it, you know, it was phenomenal. I mean, it did, it did help the business process. Obviously, we have lots of paper. We've done a good job graduating to more of an electronic approach, but there's additional steps that we can take that would help business process behind the scenes, separate from the technology's ability to help the public engage in video dialogue with us, et cetera. So all these things, I think it's good, I do think it's a wise investment of public funds. You know, I understand we have budget challenges, we have tax decisions to make, I get it. However, I mean, I think these tools are helpful in so many ways, and the residents would appreciate the convenience.
Yeah, I think it's important, because we've lost a certain segment of our residents that were really enthusiastic about watching the meetings online, and then we had some issues, and I'm not blaming that on you, it's just technology issues.
No, absolutely.
They sort of said, well, now, you know, with these things going, it's just too much of a burden to watch the meetings, so I think it would really help.
And that's one of those things, too, with going to something like Granicus, I mean, I'd want to make sure that, you know, we would be able to roll this out and hopefully not have issues. I mean, that's what we want to get away from. Sometimes technology's out of our control, and that's something, too, of just discussing with the village board of, you know, previously, we had a consultant here to assist with managing the video, and if something happened, to be able to respond to those issues, and that may be something going forward that we need to look at and maybe allocate dollars for that.
And the other thing I think maybe we should look into is, when a meeting is moved, how we can still
That was my point.
Stream the meeting, because those were really important meetings, and those are the ones that people can't watch, and that's sort of like
I agree with you 100%, and we wanted to make sure that if we did that, that it would work and there wouldn't be any challenges, and we weren't 100% sure with the technology over there that we wouldn't have interruptions, but it's something we will look into in the future.
However, we did have, you know, video delayed, you know, for putting it out. I understand the streaming aspect, but, you know, we were glad that we had video that anyone could watch thereafter.
Sure, no, that's
Well, again, I think we took very, I think that we were very prudent in the way that we approached this, to say, let's start off with, first, you start off running, start off walking rather before you run into it, and we've found out what some of the challenges are, and now when we go to the next step, we know, here are the challenges we've been having, can these be eliminated as we move forward, versus just spending that kind of money and maybe even running to those same problems for this past year. I think it gave us that opportunity to get it fine tuned and move to the next step.
Absolutely. Is the board comfortable then, or the committee, I should say, of us gathering information, having a discussion at budget meetings? Is this something you want to look into?
Budget.
Budget.
Yeah, it'll take us to collect the information.
Okay, very good.
When is budget again, in March?
February.
Yeah, February, March.
Well, I'd like you to kind of look into it tomorrow, if you're meeting with them, and then maybe
Oh, that's the point, that's the point of the meeting, absolutely.
You know, updates prior to the budget meeting.
Is that what the board is seeking us to do? I mean, it comes down to priorities.
Yeah, I
You know, so we're changing schedules now.
I don't really want to wait till March, I wanted this a year ago, so I would like it sooner rather than later.
The issue is, you don't have budget authority for that. I mean, we're moving things around, you know, and so that part is the reason to talk about timing.
Well, can't we use some of the other funds, like the Meyer fine money or something to, for this?
I mean, that money, you know, has different things to it, you decide, sure, but, you know, I just, normally, we would, we would be, you know, having this flow through a budget process, and it doesn't mean we can't collect information and try to accelerate, but that's typically how we've handled new programs.
Well, why don't you get the ball rolling tomorrow?
I think we'll gather the information and
Get some information.
We'll keep the board apprised where we're at.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number two?
Okay, number two.
I was told you had two issues, so.
I do. Number two is, I'm talking about the Christmas party. We do have two, well, first, the one part I want to talk about for the Christmas party would be for, just for village trustees, ZPA, and department heads.
Board pension?
Oh, and the commission board and pension. Can't exclude them. What, normally, I'm the one that always handles the Christmas party, okay? And what I have found right now is, I have one, one event that is on a Sunday. That's the only day we can do, which would be at Orchard Primates. It's for about 30 to 40 people, and it's come in way under budget of what has been budgeted. Need to know how you feel about this, as far as even having a Christmas party.
Explain your thoughts on
So this is versus having everybody
Correct.
As staff
Correct. Staff will have their own.
Yeah, just, I was getting some information. The concept here is, we'd have a Friday afternoon, essentially lasagna and those sorts of things for the employees. Here at Village Hall, we'd invite certainly elected officials, if you're around, to come and step by. It'd be more of an event that's more relaxed, it's during the work week, we think attendance would be improved. Obviously, we have people on different shifts, and we've had some challenges with attendance from employees at weekend events during the holidays, so this was a way to better invest some of those funds for an event more people will come to, and still, of course, allow elected officials, if you're around and available, to stop by in more of a, I guess, a relaxed atmosphere here at Village Hall, not on a, at a restaurant.
I just want some thoughts, and what, what do you, what do you think? Go ahead.
I just, I'm not sure I understand. So it's an event here at Village Hall
For village staff.
But for village staff and ZPA and the pension board.
In years past, what we've done is, there's been a holiday party here for staff.
Okay, no.
Well, down here, we've had, first, in years past, we have
No.
Years past.
Years past.
I mean, we're talking recent years, we've had one event, it's been at a restaurant typically, and we've tried to invite everyone to it, and that's within the last, the five years I've been here.
Well, let me finish. In years past, when we've had an event down here for the employees, we get a much bigger turnout.
Sure.
They haven't come to the ones that we've had offsite.
Correct.
But I thought, are we speaking the same event that was at Galati's last?
Yes.
The turnout there was
Low.
Was low for employees.
Very low.
Was low for employees.
Yes.
And we're trying to capture employees.
Right, we're trying to reward them.
Correct.
You know, we're trying to say thank you to them for their
Exactly.
I think that I'm going to rely to you guys, if you're saying, I mean, last year's the first year I was at it, so, again, it's kind of relative to me to know that it was a high show or a low showing, but you're saying it was a low showing, and to me, the idea of it is also, from the village standpoint, to take that, the staff, and show them the appreciation. So I want to do something that, that's for them. I'm not as concerned about us, to be perfectly honest. I mean, I could go or not go with the party, it doesn't matter to me from that standpoint. I think it matters more for the staff here, that I want to see have something.
I think I would, too. I mean, it would be on a Friday afternoon or something?
Yeah.
I mean, so then I could stop by in that.
Yes, yeah, we have it planned right now for December 16th, from probably 11:45 to 2:00 p.m.
I think I'd probably go with that route, and then maybe not have the
You don't want to have one for the ZPA and commission?
Um.
No?
I don't know, I'm kind of
Not sure.
Yeah, I mean, it just kind, can I think about it a little bit?
Well, I would, I would say that
I know it's
From a holiday standpoint, we don't want to put you in a situation of having to make a decision, but we do, because we have invitations and things that have to go out.
Right.
Typically, we just looked at it from some of the recent feedback from the board to revisit certain things and have everybody be a part of it, and it's time to decide on the elected official event, if we're going to have it. We appreciate the support for the employee event, that the employees will be very happy with that. And from the standpoint of the other group, you know, we've tried to bring people together from the different boards and commissions, the village board, and that is, in my opinion, very important, and of course, there's a cost to that, but it's a once-a-year type event where we see folks from different boards and commissions that are essentially volunteers coming together and trying to be part of the bigger mission of the village, so it is somewhat of an endorsement for that from a concept standpoint. We understand there's a cost, and budgets are tight, so we, Nancy and I wanted to bring it to you so you had feedback. Those that are here tonight can make the decision. We understand we have three folks missing, but time is of the essence in getting this booked.
And the budget would do both.
Let's go with both.
I take out both, I take out both.
Thank you, and I wanted to, before trustee Kraus is finished with his viewpoint, I think the other piece was, is there the ability for Nancy and myself to work through where to have it? Okay, because we try to rotate it, and trustee Kraus, are you all right if we rotate it from where it's been?
Well, it sounded like it was going to be at
Well, they're waiting for a bid from another restaurant.
Okay, yeah, sure.
But it'd be moving from where it was last year?
It'll be in the village of Cary.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'd like to hear from the rest of the folks.
We defer to your expertise, in all honesty, I'm very comfortable with you handling it all. Delegate.
I think it's important, because they're volunteers that they serve on the boards, they make important decisions for the village, and I think they need some recognition.
Correct.
Well, not only that, I've heard from them, too, that they like to know who all these other people are.
Just to get to know who they are, and I like to know, too, yeah.
And we have new ZPA members, so. All right, you got that information?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, if you would stand adjourned.